Five, six oh five P M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball? Hold on.
Here.
There's no microphones on, are there?
Mic's on.
Mike's on.
Testing. Mic on, anybody?
Lights are on, but mic's on. Not on?
Not on. Testing, testing.
We'll just have to talk loud.
Hello, hello.
Nope. They're not on. No volume. Housekeeping? Dave's not here.
Nothing. No good.
It's gonna be for the hearing impaired.
No good.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
They're on out in the lobby?
You know, last time I... Yeah.
That's on. Hello?
They work good. Need bigger ones.
Is this...
Yeah, so...
That's good.
Well, they fixed that. No feedback at all.
You want to... Are we good? Testing, testing. I don't think so.
Jeremy, we won't be able to hear you tonight.
We know, you like a stain. That's... Are you there? Hello, hello, hello.
Testing.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present.
Now's the time for oral communications on the closed session item. Two items on closed session. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and conference with labor negotiators. See nobody rise, we'll close oral communications and we will return approximately six thirty, hopefully. See you then. Bring us back into... Ball got lost. He was only from here to there. Where'd he go? There he is. All right, six thirty-three will bring us back into open session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present. City Attorney, any report of action from the closed session?
Mayor and City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. Council gave direction to staff on those, but there was no reportable action.
Very good. Please stand and join me in invocation. Chaplain Ron, you're doing it again. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, City of Lompoc, everyone in attendance here. Would you please bow your heads and be in agreement with me? Father, it's so good that we are able to come together and inquire of your wisdom to help us to lead such a great city. I thank you for the leaders. I thank you for the council members. I thank you, Lord, for first responders. Thank you for our Fire Chief, Brian Fallon, and also for our police chief, Lord Kevin Martin, and all the staff. I want to thank you, Lord, for such an opportunity to be in Lompoc. When I see the city workers and I see how they take care of our city, I want to just ask that you bless their families. I speak blessings upon each and every one that's in this room. Every one of you that come here every Tuesday and you help to get our city in a place where we can serve our citizens. And I do ask for your divine protection and I speak healing too into their lives. Anyone that may be experiencing any sickness or any, even a death. I just heard recently we had a death in our city, a member who lost a family member. I just want to ask for comfort that be up on you, especially in the time that we're living in right now. Lord, everything seems to be uncertain, but you are for sure the most certain that we can have and depend on. And so, Father, lead us tonight. Bless us. We give you thanks, Lord, for our city manager. I'm always thinking about Dean and our attorney and all of you. That as we touch and agree tonight, I pray that you would receive wisdom from on high. The Lord would give you revelation insight into this city and how it will look in the future. So every decision that you make tonight and in the preceding months of this year, you understand that what you're doing and what you're saying is going to set the future for our city. So I pray that you would have wisdom and that, Lord, will bless your families and increase your prosperity, your posterity in leadership. We thank you for all these things, Lord, and you're a wonderful man. Amen.
Please remain standing and join the platoon. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gives me a great honor to give a presentation tonight. Got a couple, but the first presentation is Police Officer Frank Lopez. Please join me at the podium, please. You made it, huh?
Yeah.
Good job.
I'm skinning my teeth.
Yeah. You had to sit down your dinner and rushed on down, Will.
I don't want to come with corn on my teeth.
Gives me great honor and privilege to office the defender of our community for, you know, twenty-four years. And well before that, you were, I think they knew you as Mr. Lompoc for quite a while, didn't they? Right? So in appreciation for your many years of service to the city of Lompoc and its citizens, May thirteenth, two thousand, to December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, present you a plaque.
Thank you, thank you.
We're gonna let you talk too. I can tell you've got a lot to say here. I didn't know about these things, but they told me about these gold, these special, oop. These special coins as well for you, so. Special coin. All right?
Thank you.
Anybody in council have anything else to say? Want to... The councilmember Starbuck there.
Yes, I've known him.
Come on in, the microphone.
I want to thank everyone. This is the Lompoc. I've been here since sixty-nine and working for the police department. I consider up in the police department, my family always will and always have. They've been very good to me. Without them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be successful as I am now. But I love and adore everyone and I will miss everyone. But I'll make sure I say hi to everybody when I see them. And thank you. Thank you for this great honor. Appreciate it from my heart. Thank you.
He's making the rounds. Do we have anybody from the watchroom?
Over there.
Oh, who's, who's? She got Frank a keg at least, right? Maybe do that next time, Warren. Ready? Okay. We have a proclamation, Electric Line Worker Recognition Day, July tenth, twenty twenty-five. So whereas since two thousand fourteen, the City of California has recognized electric line workers, the profession of electric line worker and the contributions these brave men and women make to protect public safety and expressing support for designating a State California Line Worker Recognition Day. And whereas the City of Lompoc joins other communities across the state in recognizing and celebrating the profession of electric line worker and other job classifications with line worker certification, and therefore we honor our electric division personnel for exemplary service to the city. And whereas this profession demands passion, dedication, and ongoing training and require line workers to be available to work twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to construct, repair, and maintain infrastructure to keep electricity flowing. And whereas line workers are often first responders during the storms and other catastrophic events, working to repair broken and damaged electrical lines under hazardous condition in order to make the area safe for other public safety heroes. And whereas line workers play a vital role in the lives of our citizens to maintaining and growing our electrical infrastructure, and they put their lives on the line every day by working with the many dangers of high voltage. Now therefore, I, James I Mosby, Mayor of City of Lompoc, do hear my proclaim, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Electric Line Worker Recognition Day, and call upon the citizens and businesses to knowledge and thank the line workers you see for the selfless and dangerous work they perform every day to keep power and the public safe. And witness herefore, got the seal on this day in twenty twenty-five. So thank you, guys. I know people don't realize, except when the power's off, they realize how important we have it and how easy we have it just to turn the switch on. And we thank you guys for what we're doing. We are very lucky to have you guys in-house with us and stuff. And got anything to say? All right, come on in.
So I'd just like to say that personally, I'm pretty proud of everybody in our shop. We've been real shorthanded for a while. Have about ten guys taking care of about eighteen thousand customers, so we tend to stay pretty busy. Working our twenty-four hour, seven day a week schedule, we tend to spend a little more time at work than we do with our families at home. So just want to say thank you to everybody in the department. Also like to take this chance to say thank you to some of the other departments that kind of go unheard of, our office staff, supervisors, and our mechanics for keeping our fleet of old equipment in running working order. And also like to thank the Police and Fire Department for being a part of our program with dispatch and helping keep the community safe when lines are down. So thank you, guys.
You guys too. Can you get us off?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is Frank still making the rounds, shaking hands? All right. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to turn it over to our Fire Chief, Brian Fallon, to go over just a quick update on what the fireworks and how to be, celebrate responsibly.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. Yeah, this is just a reminder to our citizens here that our goal this year, of course, is to have a safe and enjoyable Independence Day. And with that, we would ask that you are mindful of the fireworks that you're using. The city does offer, through our municipal code, an opportunity to use safe and sane fireworks. There's five different booths throughout the city where you can find the safe and sane fireworks. We will do aerial monitoring this year, more or less inspecting to see if there's any aerial use. So anything that goes in the air is illegal per our municipal code and does come with a fine of fifteen hundred dollars. So we would ask that you're mindful of that. And if you do not have a location to use safe and sane fireworks, two hundred West Ocean is a location that the city designates for safe and sane use.
Big chief. Just wanted to let everybody know, there's still a lot of things to do this summer. We have our reading challenge at the library. Seven hundred and fourteen people have already signed up and they've logged in two hundred and five thousand minutes. Our goal is two hundred and fifty, and you can participate in that until August first. They have a lot of really nice gifts, like PCA theater tickets. The more you read, the more chances you have to win, so. It's also July is the Parks and Rec Month. Let's build together and play together. I want to thank them for everything they do to put stuff together. And if you go to the next slide, some of the things they're doing is they got movie in the park. That's free movies, the series. It'll be Saturday, July twelfth, at Ryan Park. They'll be playing Dog Man this week and leaves around dusk, around eight o'clock, and it's free, so come on out and enjoy that. And also, the Aquatic Center is still doing extended hours. They'll be doing that until August tenth. That's from one till three. Some opportunities there. And one more thing for the Aquatic Center, Friday, July eleventh. It'll be free swim, so you're welcome to come on out and enjoy that for free. We'll be closed fourth of July. Remind everybody that. We've got City Hall, Lompoc Public Library, the Aquatic Center, City Landfill will be closed on Friday, observing the fourth. If your pickup is Friday, it'll be on Saturday, the sixth, so. And then I wanted to take a moment to, I don't know who at the base sat to rock it off, but that was nice to kick it off, right? But also wanted to thank our mayor for putting the, one of the only floats that had nothing but flowers all over it. He did a great job. I was super impressed. And they ended up getting first place for the full-size float for the seventy-second annual Flower Festival. So congratulations. Good job.
Thank you for your help, too. And all the others. Question for you. What are the hot topics out there? Was the auto report for the chamber, did, have we received that yet?
We notified them. They said they're working on it. We have not received it yet.
Okay. Very good. Any other quick questions for the city manager at this time? Okay. We'll open up to public comment on the items on consent calendar. Consent calendar items are, we have three items on there today. These are the normal customary items. Approval of minutes, an approval of ratification of expenditures, and adoption of ordinance number seventeen twenty-eight, parentheses twenty-five, amending chapter three point two four of the municipal code. See nobody rise, we'll close public comment for consent calendar. Bring it back to council. Do any of the council members wish to pull any of these items? I myself would like to pull item number three, feeling that it's not a normal customary item, which by pulling such item will come back immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Anybody else take a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar minus item three.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Ball, a second by Bridge. Go ahead and vote. Wait to the light. Push the button for me. Obviously doesn't like me. Not accepting my vote. How about you, Victor, you vote? Don't know what to tell you. Yep. Do you want a roll call? Sure, maybe three times a charm. Listen, my ball, second by Bridge. Go ahead and vote. That's what you're trying to get at. Yeah, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ball?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Bridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes.
Mayor Mosby?
Aye. So that passes five zero. All right, move us to a staff presentation. Parks and Recreation Project Coordinator, Jim Mandoro, to provide an update on the current parks and recreation projects.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Jim Mandoro, Parks and Recreation Coordinator. So we had a busy ten months. Got a lot of projects done and some continuing right now. So we can start next. So these are the areas, projects that have been completed or is still underway. Next. So this is the Aquatic Center. The two dehumidifiers that were placed are now operational. Next. That's the other one. So we got two, like I said, out there at the rec center, at the Aquatic Center. Next. And College Park is still under plan review or to try to get a building permit out. Hopefully that will happen within the next month or so. Next. Pioneer Park Bay Ruth Field has been completed. This week was the first week we played on the field. It has been totally renovated, as you can see. And from my comments, from what I heard out there in the field, during the tournament, everybody appreciate. We do have bleachers coming in. Maybe hopefully within this month, it'll be delivered and then put together and placed at the field. Next. Just another view of that Bay Ruth facility. Next. Library is still under design. For the library, the design, like I said, the new added parking lot in the back and some of the amenities for a new reading outside and so forth. Next. The Anderson Rec Center, the HVAC is completed. As you can see, it's in the gymnasium. They put new ductwork. You see it on both sides, on top, to provide air conditioning and heating. And it is operational. And they've been coming handy this summer. They've been having a lot of activities in the gym during the day for the young, young ones coming in, so it's much appreciated. Next. And these are the two units, how they are looking on the outside that supplies that air conditioning and heating. Next. And then we have this on the other side of the building as well, the HVAC units. Next. River Park Campsites. It's underway. On the left picture, you can see what was there before demolition. And on the right, you can see a little bit, again, before demolition, the existing restroom that was there. Next. Now this is, everything's been demoed out. We got other pictures, but I did this because this is from the, from broadband. Chris is able to give us some drone shots. So right now that is going and blowing and it's moving ahead very well. So hopefully we'll have another twenty-six sites within a couple of months to be used. And this, we just had it completed. This is a parking lot, number three, or I think it's the Veterans or American Legion, the very last parking lot. We just got it repaved and restriped. We only was able to do one parking lot because that's the only funding that we had enough to do. So hopefully in the next, maybe next, this next fiscal year, we can get the other two done as well. Next. Now this is Dick Dewey's. We just resealed and restripped the whole parking lot finally. And the lights out in the parking lot have now new headlights, LEDs. So they're all working good and it's really bright, lights up the, lights up the place at night. This is Ryan Park. As you know, we had the Flower Festival this weekend, so this is part of the demo before we did the sidewalk. But you can see the good concrete we did for the food truck parking. Next. And you can see how it's, this is where we completed. And I think I heard everybody appreciated the nice, smooth sidewalk and vendors for food. They appreciated all that was done as well. JM Park, ongoing, that's the existing building that was there. Next. This is, we'll go through a few slides. This is now a completed. Right now, we just have the fence around the sod so that we don't get any trapping on it. Next. And these are just different angles. Next. And then one more. So this is all done. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll get the fence removed once the sod is taken. The facility itself is operational, but we're just waiting to decide to tape. And that's it. And any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, we have questions.
Councilor Bridge?
That's an impressive list. And you guys did a great job on the Flower Festival. You know how I was all wiggy about it, so I'm really glad that it all got done.
Well, it took a lot, yeah. It, you know, the contractor that, they get the bid, I know them very well, J.J. Fisher. And we brought it to their attention. J.J., who was the owner, and we told him, hey, we got to get this done. What's, what's your chances? And Jim, what do you need? And I told him what we needed. And he jumped up and his guys knocked it out. And everybody seemed like he was surprised, but give it to J.J. Fisher contract, they did a fabulous job.
Well, everybody knows how much I love the Flower Festival, so I want to personally thank you for that. I'd also like to make a request that before the RV Park expansion gets activated, that we can review the policies and procedures for those slots or sites or whatever the right phrase is, how those get allocated.
You talking about the River Park campsite, the new ones?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So I, you know, we've got plenty of time because I'm sure you're a ways away. But before we actually activate it, it's one of the things I get constantly poked at, that, hey, there's just, that it doesn't feel equitable and I don't have a good way to answer it. So I would very much like to have that come back sometime before we activate it.
And that can be in discussion right now because, like I said, maybe hopefully we're planning, the contractor has a, he has a schedule, hopefully be done by the end of this month, but I think that's really pushing it. So in my opinion, you know, hopefully with no bars hold, hopefully by middle to end of August, the campsites would be done. And maybe the bathroom, the bathroom is, is, you know, they got to prep all that and everything, so, you know, that's still, but we can...
It's an impressive project. I just know that I'd like to start with a new fresh slate and have people feel that it's equitable, how people get, you know, how you get in the park.
Yes, no, sounds good.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Being since your birthday, I'll let you make your council request at that time and see if you can get two other people to go along with that so we can get that back. First, you got, you're good? You with his request? Another one for?
Yeah, I got one.
All right, so with this council request to bring back the discussion of the proceedings of the, right? You got that with? So, all right. Hey, kudos to the striping of the memorial section at River Park, all the way down there and such. Hopefully, did the barbecue get patched at all? Not yet. It's still got a big hole in the middle of there. It's kind of a heat, foot warmer as well as a barbecue back down there. But it really, it looks nice and, and good job at the Dewey Center. I know that was a, I don't think that's, has been striped in a long time. And having lights there, I mean, that's, that's really going to be nice. Because I know down there, the most recent senior event that you had there, it was pretty chaotic in that parking lot. So now we know where the lines are, so. Looking good. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Can I ask Jim a question? Is this your last meeting, that Jim?
Huh, I'm sorry?
Is this your last meeting?
Supposed to be.
Well, I wanted to personally say thank you for everything you've done to make a lot of these projects happen. Appreciate you, really do.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Councilor Ball's got a question to the...
You're on the way out, I guess, so, but hopefully you can give me a little clarity. So just on, curious about College Park. I know there's been designs, it's been planned and talked about for some time. I know some in the community are just think it's never going to happen type of thing. But maybe specific to the skate park and renovating College Park, where is that project?
Well, it's still in planning for plan check. There's one item that they're waiting on and the contractor or that the, the design, the, the design consultant, Archie, is trying to obtain from the vendor. And that is for what we call a wind wall. They're trying to get the engineering specs on that and they're in the process of doing that. And as of last today, there's an email that they're on it and hopefully they'll have it by this week so that it'll be sent to Building Department for their plan and review. And hopefully, that's the last step. And once it, that, if everything goes good with that, then we can go further.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. So brings us to item number four, new, oh, nope, got oral communications first. Oral communication for three minutes. Anything relating to the city of Lompoc?
Karen Howenstein, lifelong resident. Thank you, Jim Mandoro, for your presentation because you had a photo in there that showed the sea of plastic next to our River Park. There is a movement, I've been going to a lot of meetings in South County, and there's a movement in South County among all of the South County communities to only have organic, sustainable farming on the perimeter of their area. I think we should join this. The Land Trust of Santa Barbara County is controlling most of the commercial farming that surrounds our city. And I'm going to be drafting a letter and asking them officially to have, apply the same policy to the leases that they hold near Lompoc. It's, it looks better for us to have sustainable, organic farming on our perimeter. And it also reduces our exposure to the harmful chemicals that commercial farming uses. I believe that Lompoc is not at all the armpit of our county. And we should be held up and require the same respect that the rest of the county is getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Otero. I'm a longtime Lompoc resident. And I just wanted to voice some concerns I had regarding the new development projects that we have going on. I want to start by, you know, admitting that it's really good that we have new housing development coming into the city. You know what I mean? A lot of our city infrastructure, you know, it's, it's good that we have something new coming in. However, I'm just concerned about how much of it is being geared towards, like affordability. Like the Burton project promises 10% of their development that they're gonna be doing up on the grade here will be dedicated for like affordable housing and whatnot. And that's the state's minimum requirement. And, you know, to, to kind of piggyback off of the speaker before me, you know, we, we aren't the, the armpit of the county. Lompoc is a beautiful place to live. You know, we have the direct view of Surf Beach. We have all this beautiful flora and fauna. And, you know, the people who live here are just as beautiful as, as this place, you know, is. And I think that we deserve more than the state's minimum. And so I would like to ask that potentially these dealings or contracts are renegotiated so that we have more affordability and also mixed-use housing to make the city of Lompoc more walkable. My other concern is that with, you know, this sort of gold rush of housing development being built, I would just ask that, you know, the city make sure that these houses are being built right the first time. There's a nationwide, you know, wave of all of this housing needs to be built because people need somewhere to live. And, you know, you have inspectors go through and there are, you know, broken beams or things that are put on faulty. And I just, you know, maybe want to make sure that we build these houses correctly the first time. You know, other than that, thank you guys for coming to the City Hall meeting and happy Fourth of July.
Hello, Carl Jones. I actually have a request of council. You know, we'd like to know what's going on with Pell-Budad. Concerned about it, they went through a vote to approve to change so that we could sell public land to these people. They have not posted anything on their website or their social media since November. So it's been eight months they've done anything. I'm not even sure, I can't even be sure that they actually gave us all the finances they're supposed to, they were supposed to give the city prior to all this stuff happening. So I think we need to look into this. What's going on with these people? Why, you know, eight months later, we haven't heard nothing? You know, we, they put a vote out there to approve selling public land. You think they'd keep people updated? This doesn't sound very transparent to me, number one. So I take exception to it. And I think the city council needs to look into this to figure out what's going on. I mean, eight months, not a single post on social media from somebody that's supposed to be bringing something great to Lompoc. They don't even have anything posted later than November of last year on their own website. So there's something going on there we might want to check into. Just saying. Thank you.
Hello, Jay Salzberg. I live overlooking Ryan Park. This is a picture I just took from Ocean Avenue at the fire station. Notice the palm trees? I know it'd be nice to have it on the display. But the palm trees all have dead fronds hanging over the, the fire station. This is the same all over town, dead fronds on palm trees. Now, all we have to do is look at the videos on YouTube from the LA fires just a few months ago. And the, the palm trees were all on fire. I know they had this sundown of winds causing big problems there, but we have sundown of winds here. But just not as often. Twenty, forty years. I can go to almost any upscale neighborhood in town and, and point at code violations of sheds built onto houses of flammable materials. City and county buildings with ground cover up against the clabberd, flammable clabberd of the building. All a, a formula for disaster. So the regulations that you may invoke in an ordinance to, to give the fire marshal the authority to mitigate these situations. I know it doesn't have to happen instantly, but it needs to happen. Because these problems can occur.
All right, thank you. Your, your three minutes is up. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor? Councilmembers, my name is David Morgan. I own rental property here in Lompoc and I'm requesting your assistance. Back in December, I purchased the old Lompoc Housing Assistance Properties at the 700 block of North E. Since October, there's been an RV park there continuously, people living in it. I've requested multiple times from the, the code enforcement to go out and have, you know, have it taken care of. It's hard enough managing my own tenants that I find myself spending most of my days managing the effects of other people who aren't my tenants. Whether it's dealing with graffiti all over the buildings, the fences, trash being dumped. I made two dump runs today with sofas, couches. It's just not possible for my tenants to throw away that many mattresses, sofas, chairs in a week. With respect to parking, I'd like to submit this. Other cities have on their books rules regarding the seventy, you know, the 72-hour rule for parking. They've made it so that the vehicles have to be moved a minimum of one tenth of a mile rather than six inches. So you can't play the game of whack-a-mole where the person gets the tires chalked and it gets moved six inches and they're off the hook for another 72 hours. Those cities have enforced, like I said, they have to move the vehicles at least a tenth of a mile. I would like to request that one or more of you at least make a motion to place this on the table for discussion at a future date. Talk about possible amendments to the city code. You know, it's hard enough with parking. Most weekends, I can't even come and park and work on my own properties because all of the parking spaces are taken from people illegally parking out front. So I could go on with a number of other things, but you get the gist. So I am requesting your help. It has a financial impact on me, on my tenants, and on the other legal tenants in the neighboring buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let's go and close the oral communications. We'll bring back to new business. Now item number four. Introduction of Ordinance Number 172925 Designating Fire Hazard Severity Zones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow city council members. My name's John Stephens. I'm the Fire Marshal Battalion Chief for the City of Lompoc. Go ahead, next slide. So five days into me becoming the Fire Marshal, kinda had to hit the ground running. This letter arrived on my desk. I didn't really know what it was. I had to do a little research, talk to the other Fire Marshals and find out what it was. And lo and behold, it's this thing called Fire Hazard Severity Zones. So it required a lot of research. There's benchmarks to be hit. So I had to notify the public within 30 days of receiving that letter. And then we have 120 days to adopt it into as a city ordinance. Next slide. So this, this didn't just come about. It, it started a long time ago. So there's probably a few of you that are gonna remember this, but 1980, the Panorama Fire. It burned 28,800 acres and it burned 325 structures. In 1985, hazard severity zone maps were created. But nothing was really done with them. In 1991, the Tunnel Fire burned 1,600 acres, 2,900 structures, 25 fatalities, and that was in the Oakland Hills. If you remember that fire. So the year after that, 1992, the Bates Bill called for CalFire to identify very high fires, hazard severity zones in LRA, or the local responsibility areas. Next slide. So how were the LRA, LRA maps created for us? So they were created by different modeling. And there was fuel models, topography models, and weather models. The fuel models, they looked at different kind of fuels in your area. Whether it was like, like flashy fuels, which are the grass that you see on the south side of the hills. There's shrubs, brush, which is a little bit bigger. And then you've got fuels that they become ladder fuels that will spread to the trees. So that's your fuel models. Your topography model are the hills. The rolling hills or flatlands that you see, that's your topography. And then there's the weather model. And so here in Lompoc, you know that we've got winds. And then we've got some heat and we've got some, some rain, but not a lot anymore. And next slide. So what do the fire hazard severity zones measure? So they measure hazard, not risk. So the difference between hazards, the hazard maps, they're based on 50 years of research. It's, it's not just a thing that they just made up. It's, it's, there's a long history of the research. Whereas the risk maps, they're more short-term and they deal with defensible space. Like the gentleman was talking about, how there's stuff right up against a building that's flammable. That's your defensible space. Fuel reduction, so when I send out all my weed abatement letters, that's your fuel reduction. And then house or building, building hardening, which has to do with metal roofing or tile roofs or stucco is good, box steves, things like that. Next slide. So will this affect my insurance? It shouldn't. So insurance companies, they use risk models, not hazards. The risk models are, they're constantly changing. Whereas CalFire's hazard maps, they're built to remain steady. They won't be a quick change. And so the short answer to, will it affects my insurance? No, it shouldn't. And that was, that was a quote by the California Department of Insurance. Go ahead. So I feel fortunate that the majority of the city doesn't fall into any zone and we don't need to make it any more stringent. So the thing about these maps that the city or that the state has given to us is that we can adopt them or we can make them more stringent. And so Santa Barbara City, Montecito, Carp Summerland, and some of the county areas have actually made their maps more stringent. I'm not super happy with how our maps ended up. I don't like all the red on the south part of the city or in the north part of the city, but that's what they gave us. And next slide. So what areas are affected? So north of town at the Y, Highway One in Harris Grade. And then south, basically south part of the city, south of Olive Avenue from the west to the east. It's a lot on the south side of town. Next slide. So how will these areas be affected? So with new construction, they're going to be required to fall under CBC or California Building Code 7A, which is the house hardening, like I was saying, or building hardening. And then they're, not just in the new building, but also in existing structures, they're gonna require more defensible space or will need to require more defensible space. So along with weed abatement, it may be more of the brush around the house. And then eventually Zone Zero requirements are going to become, they're gonna come into law. And Zone Zero is like you were saying, is that zero to five feet range from your house or your, your building or whatever, that's, that's Zone Zero. Next slide. So I included the California Building Code and the California Fire Code. These are both right out of there. So when the city adopted the 2022 building and fire codes, we, in a roundabout way, adopted the maps that we're coming forth with. It, it says right in the building code, it's right in the fire code. And within the fire code, it tells you about the 30 days. It tells you about the 120 days to adopt. I didn't see it until I, after I'd gotten my letter and started doing research. Next slide. So recommendations to the council, it's to introduce and subsequently adopt Ordinance Number 172925, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lompoc designated Fire Hazard Severity Zones as recommended by the California State Fire Marshal. When I was going through the ordinance, I did notice there were a couple of typos, so I threw that on the PowerPoint also. So it's listed as designated fire hazard safety zones in two different spots. They're actually severity zones. Doesn't really work. And next slide. And are there any questions? This is the first reading. Second reading will be July 15th and hopefully adoption of the ordinance. Questions?
Question, Councilor Bridge?
I was curious if you've had any conversations or thoughts on how this will affect ADUs?
ADUs? So like that, that falls under new, new building. And so it depends on where they are. Are, are they going to be on the south side of town or up in the red zone like Burton, Burton Mesa if it ever gets built? It, it could affect them. I don't think they're gonna keep them from getting built, but there'll be more restrictive building codes for them.
So, so this might fall to planning then. My understanding is we're in the process of or have created cookie cutter ADUs, whatever the right term is there for. If, if they use our plan, they, they can just go build it. it. So, are we gonna have to change those plans?
That's something we can talk to our consultant about. Any other questions? All right, does it be open up to public comment? Thank you. Open up to public comment.
That was a great presentation. I wanna thank Jay Salzberg for making his comments about palm trees. Palm trees are ornamental trees, and they're very special when it comes to fire. If you look at any of the videos from the devastating fires in Southern California, you see what happens with palm trees that are not maintained. Specifically, they set off these firebrands that float in the air currents that are created by the fire, and they can end up miles away, starting fires in other neighborhoods. I, I would encourage our city to take a very aggressive approach towards palm trees and palm tree maintenance in our new fire ordinance, because we're going to be preventing a lot of loss. Palm trees are a symbol of affluence. They're coveted by royals. So, we really should expect that anyone with a palm tree on their property is properly maintaining it, and also making our, our city look great, you know? It's, it's, there's, it's just win-win-win all around. But, I, when I owned two thirty-seven South Rose Street myself in the nineteen nineties, I know because we have a palm tree in the backyard, and it does cost to maintain them. But when you're a property owner, you take, you take those responsibilities. So, please consider addressing that, because palm trees are special.
Congratulations, John, for being our Fire Marshal. Looking forward to talking to you more, especially when I'm walking up at Beatty Park. I do have a, a suggestion, it may be elsewhere, may not be in this presentation, but one of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm gonna suggest is that, the, the worst-case scenario, because we have a lot of winds here, and, uh, I remember when I first got here, we lost a fire chief and, and a, a base commander and a wind commander, because we, we're not prepared for the way that the winds shift and the azimuth. And one of the things I, I would like to have in, in your presentation is what happens when the wind shifts? And I noticed that in Crestview Terrace, I, I think that was the area where I saw that, where it was red. Those winds up there, if you ever got on a sail, you, you get blown away all the way to Biltedin. I mean, that, those winds are high, and I know that Dirk knows that. So, what, what I'm suggesting is that we put a model together so that if anything happened, because we did have a fire one time over at, at John Mansfield, or they have, they changed their name several times, but that fire actually came over that hill, and, and it was blowing, that wind was blowing, and I was telling you, it was coming over. And what I would like to see is, how do you do a, uh, an evacuation? And how do, how do you prepare for that? If, if we had a fire, if we had a wind and a fire was blowing, uh, we, we, I would like to see something in place, especially with the Vandenberg launches that, if you ever noticed, uh, that they're way outside their corridor, when I used to be responsible for those launches. They look like they're going, coming right over personal property, and I don't mind saying that publicly. I think that if we ever had some kind of catastrophic event, uh, with the winds blowing and, and a launch was going up, and it actually blew that vehicle off, of course, it would blow it in, in, in such a way that any debris, uh, from that rocket, it would hit those hills, and they would light up. And so, I know that we partner with Vandenberg Fire Department? And, and so what I'm suggesting is that we put a model together as a worst-case scenario. What do we do and how do we get the citizens to allow? That's, that's my idea. Anybody else? You guys got any deliberations, motion, questions? I mean, I know you, we do, we are working on the, the safety element for the general plan. That document is being wrapped up, so some of the questions that were asked are addressed in that, correct? Head nods, yes. All right? Have you guys, I'm sure you've had opportunities with the safety plan, right? Either one of you two?
Yes, we have.
Okay. So, answers to some of the public's questions are, are in the safety element. You guys have been working hard at that already, with plans and evacuation and all that stuff. Yes? Any other questions? Steve's motion.
I have a question.
Councilman Vega?
Yeah, for, uh, for the Fire Department. These zone disclosures that we have here and these changes here, are they more severe than the previous designations? Because it looks like there was a change here, okay? The severity issue? Because I think what happens here is, even though there's nothing we can do about it, I guess, because I'm reading this and it says the local authorities have no, they can't do anything but make it more severe. And then the question I just want the residents to know is, if it has changed and, and is more severe now, this is gonna be part of the zone disclosures when you buy property, which is going to affect insurance rates, which it already has, and I just wanted to make that statement, okay? Because, uh, aside from buying a home now, you have to make sure you have insurance, and I think that's probably where you were talking about, you weren't happy that, where they put the severe zones. And, and, just a question, has it changed, I guess? Is it more severe now with this new ordinance?
So, Lompoc has never had a fire severity zone map, ever. I, I don't know about the surrounding hills, but Lompoc has never had a, a fire severity map. Um, it's funny, I, I told you I hit the ground running. I actually had a couple contact me, and it was regarding their insurance, and their insurance company wanted to drop them. And I went and met with them at their house, beautiful home, well, well-manicured, landscape beautiful. And the insurance company told them they need to get rid of all their vegetation. I said, well, that would take, like, valuable, that, that would take, in my mind, to take money away from their house. And so, I said I'd look into it more, and then that's when I found the letter on my desk and started looking into it, and, um, I think the easy answer is, uh, it'll be like, we're gonna have to work with the residents to make things happen, make it work, and just do our best.
I appreciate that, and the answer is, the, the reason I ask, because if we've never had a fire hazard severity map, I know the county and the zone does, okay? So, we do have outline maps, which names us as a fire hazard zone, which would be the village, and a lot of the outline areas, and things, plus we're in an inundated area, which is the complete opposite of fire, it's water. So, I do know, I just wanted to make sure we're not, uh, not much we can do about it. We're shooting ourselves in the foot. Looks like the insurance companies are, are playing it safe also, aside from the fire hazard. But, uh, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Ball?
I guess, uh, maybe kinda following up, just want, and I'm not sure you have a good answer for this. This may be something we have to come back with, but I am curious if, you know, down the road, we've spent twenty years, they've drawn lots of pretty pictures about potential Burton Mesa, you know, that whole housing project. What I'd be curious is that if these new state rules, new, uh, distances from houses, will any of that, or the types of build requirements, will that change, uh, you know, at the design level, anything?
Yes.
To move forward? And I assume it will, and I guess for me, at some point, I'd love to learn about those adjustments and what potential developers would be facing, considering this.
Absolutely. It's, it's in the building code and it's in the fire code, both of them. It's kind of spelled out which way it's going, and what it's gonna have to do with house hardening and just different materials we're gonna use.
Yeah. So, I'd love to learn more about the impacts and kind of project out on some of this, too. Yep.
You have a question? Councilman Vega? No? Okay. All right. Thank you for the, the report, and, uh, at least you got five days, right? All right, I'll entertain a motion or?
I'll make a motion that we take staff's recommendation and have the first reading of ordinance seventeen twenty-nine, burns twenty-five.
Counsel, I wanna make sure we have the two typo corrections in that motion, so do you agree with this?
As well as the two typo corrections that we were presenting.
Did we get a second on the motion?
Yeah. Yeah, it's already voted.
I didn't see, didn't see it up there.
Ball will vote.
Ball will vote second? All right.
Yes.
So, we got a Bridge, Ball again, and go ahead and vote. Welcome, Mayor.
I think we can do a roll call.
All right, roll call again, please. What do you want for, what was it, fifty thousand bucks?
Councilmember Ball?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Bridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes.
Mayor Mosby?
Yes. It's best at five-zero. Yee-haw! Right? All right, so that moves us down to... Number three, coming back. Item number three, correct? Or did you wanna go to written communications? Doesn't matter what you want to do. Are we supposed to do written communications first?
We have none.
We have none. There we did. All right. So, item number three, who's, who's in charge of three? City, city attorney? It had nobody on the title for three?
Mayor and counsel, this is an ordinance that, um, the staff, I believe it was staff, decided to include in the budget approval this year, so it was introduced at the last meeting and described in the last meeting staff report. This was a, uh, there's a section in the municipal, in the municipal code that governs the changes to the budget that the, uh, can be made after the budget is adopted, so this is changes to proposed expenditures in the budget. And, basically, there used to be some dollar amounts that could be, uh, changes in the funding levels in the budget, um, within a fund, could be up to two thousand dollars by the Management Services Director, up to ten thousand dollars by the city manager, anything over ten thousand dollars had to be approved by the city council. Um, and then if there, uh, were changes that were to be made between funds, uh, those could not be done without coming to the city council. Those require city council approval. So, what this ordinance would do is it would amend those threshold amounts. Within one fund, there could be transfers, uh, by the Management Services Director, up to thirty thousand dollars, uh, by the city manager, up to one hundred thousand dollars, and anything over a hundred thousand dollars would need to come to city council. And then transfers between funds, uh, of budget amounts could be done by the city manager for up to five thousand dollars. Anything over five thousand dollars between funds would need to come to the city council. The other thing that this ordinance does is it adds a new provision to this section of the code that says, and this is on page two of the ordinance under D here, that during the middle of the year, uh, when you're in the middle of the budget year, the fiscal year, when actual expenditures in a fund exceed or are expected to exceed the approved appropriations by more than a hundred thousand dollars, the staff shall bring those expenditures to the city council for consideration of additional appropriations or other interventive action that the council may desire. And, uh, this means not only if a fund is expected to be exceeded by over a hundred thousand dollars, but also if a department within a fund is expected to exceed their budget by over a hundred thousand dollars, then that staff needs to bring that to the city council for, um, to consider what to do about that. That's what this ordinance would do.
Thank you. This is one of the items that I asked a month and a half ago, because I felt for a while, probably many years, this city hadn't been aligning with three twenty-four sixty, um, and it's well antiquated. I think the spirit of the ordinance, or of the city code back then was, had some limiters. We spent a lot of time setting the budget at department levels, yet many times, those limits that we set, um, probably in the last twenty years, it's been, uh, millions of dollars have exceeded what the council was setting at, and then there was negotiations back and forth with what that really meant, and just because it was in the budget didn't mean it would go over, or, in many cases, what happened, uh, the council was the one that, that we got the fingers pointed at us, saying we're the ones that cut budget or we overspent, and it, it wasn't. So, I wanna thank you guys for spending time in locking this down. I know it might be a little more difficult, but it also, why not have a budget if there were some, not some limiters on it? And I think it's very important what, what we have here, especially, uh, section D of that. I think that helps significantly. It was something I tried to do five or six years ago, and I guess the, uh, the communications got crossed in one way or another. I see that little smile. But I think it's important. We spent a lot of time setting these budgets at, at that, and so does staff, setting the numbers at department levels. I think it's important that we, um, stay and do the best we can to align with that, and if there's complications, we bring it back and publicly bring it back in front of the public to, to do these changes or modifications, so, um, I, I thank you guys for spending the time and coordinating this and putting together to, to make a better budget. So, Councilman Bridge, your question?
I'm trying to understand exactly what a fund is in this terminology. Can somebody explain that to me?
What a fund is?
I think what it's saying is that we're not gonna exceed appropriations in a fund. However, there's some funds, like the general fund, that have multiple departments in it, and we wanted to be able to see at the department level and those funds that have multiple departments, whether they're gonna exceed their appropriations or not.
So, is the police department a fund?
It is in the general fund. The police department is a department. So, they would still need to come back if that department in that fund was gonna go over.
So, item A one would be, you could move from, um, police to fire?
Not to exceed a hundred thousand, for me, yes, sir.
And then, you said D was the only thing that was new, but it looks like four is all new. Is there some nuance to that? A four? Is there some nuance to that? It's pretty complex, so.
I guess, it used to be that you could, that the staff could not move appropriations from one fund to another fund without coming to council. So, what we've added here is, uh, the ability for the city manager to do that up to five thousand dollars, and so we needed to describe that somehow. So, I guess that is, that is new, but it's only up to five thousand dollars.
And for the edification of the council, we don't, we bring everything to council if there's a transfer from one fund to another. I don't transfer from fund to fund.
So, the same, you will still have to follow the rules. I assume the utilities is a fund, and you really can't move utility money from that to the general fund without other kinds of rules coming into play.
And that's kind of an oddity, if you will, because the utilities is a department, but there's multiple funds within that department, so they're like the opposite way of the general fund. They have water, electric, wastewater. Those are all funds, but they're all in one department.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Any other questions? I'd make a motion to approve?
You don't have to.
No, we did it already. Do I need a public comment, because we did it before?
This has to be approved because we're adopting it tonight. Last time was just the introduction.
Correct. But do I need to make public comment again, since we did it on a consent calendar earlier?
Oh, no, you don't need to, sorry.
So I make the motion to approve as written? What about you? Well, you guys, you want to wait to be called, or are you guys going to?
Just call.
I got you. Just go ahead and vote. Go ahead and call the vote.
She's going to have to do a roll call again. There's no such plan.
Councilmember Ball? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Bridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes.
Mayor Mosby?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a process of five zero. Oral communications, last two minutes of oral communications, sitting in the city. Seeing nobody rise, we will close the final oral communications. Bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Bridge?
I had a few things, since it's so early, I can heat up time. I really wanted to thank the city and the Flower Festival Association. To me, that exemplifies when the city and non-voluntary, not volunteers come together, and that event is the jewel of our city. And from the parade to the festival, from the police to the parks and wrecks, to the cleaning crews, everybody just performed with excellence, and I was very proud. So I wanted to give everybody a personal thank you. River Terrace, it's moving right along. I wanted to thank the staff. They came up with some creative solutions for dealing with structural elements like exercise equipment. They're going to get their sales trailer up, so we'll start to see sales, hopefully. The Laurel Avenue, they're going to try and get that looking a lot better, because that'll help them sell. And that's basically what they're focused on right now, is starting to sell. So tell your friends and family, it's time to buy. This RV parking keeps coming up. I've had numerous letters this week. I actually sent a, a letter in only to be told that RV parking on our streets without permits are not allowed overnight. That's hard for me to fathom, because I know there's plenty of places where they're parked overnight without permits. So that seems like some kind of enforcement issue. And I know L Street, they've been having a lot of problem with it. So I'd love to see this come back, and if we're going to do an ordinance that says you got to move three hundred feet, which is one of the suggestions I made, or what else the council would want to do. But this just continues to. So if I could get concurrence on that?
Well, you took my council request. Thanks.
I guess that's a concurrent thing.
Backing up, so you have Starbuck and Ball backing you up on that as well, so.
I'd like to reinforce that a little bit, if I could, if I could help you out.
And Councilmember Vega, so you...
If you don't mind, sir.
You got your...
Okay, and then the last...
I'm not, am I, you want me to do it now or not yet?
Well, let, let him finish. He just made his motion. Let him finish this, counsel. You'll, you'll be next.
Okay, I got just one last thing, and I'll, I'll be quiet, sure. I, I took an action a few months ago to investigate having some kind of school approach on drones and have that show. And I, I've pulsed everybody. Nobody seems to be wanting to take the effort to lead that. So I have failed back to commercial outfits. And we could have a pretty decent show for on the order of thirty thousand. It'll take some coordination. Mario will have to help me move it along, but I didn't want to go down that path without council's general agreement, because what I had talked about before was kind of a school program where the kids would be involved, and it doesn't look like that's feasible. But if we would still like to have a show on Fourth of July, I'm happy to continue working it, if that's something the council would like to see.
Well, I think, I just think to do that, you, to bring it back, I think you would have, to make the motion to bring it back for discussion, and that would be after the Fourth of July, so it would be for the following year.
Yeah, it's already way too late for this year.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
But all I really do to start with is I'll work with Mario and see what we can break at.
I'd give you a second on that.
Anybody else? Jeremy?
Councilmember Ball, we'll give you a third. All right, let's go with Councilmember Vega.
It was regarding Councilmember Bridge's motion. If I could just clarify a little bit more. The motion he wanted to be back was with, for RV parking. I specifically had ran by this incident here myself, and I even spoke with city manager about it, and we finally took care of part of it. But what we need is to bring back the ordinance regarding RV parking or non-compliant vehicles, even though the RV parking is a separate issue, and the seventy-two hour parking rule, because people are playing the game, and I do believe we need to have a change here. And the other part of it is, we created a permit process without any enforcement, because I know for a fact that people are just, they're being tagged for the seventy-two hour and they're moving. The permit process doesn't even come into play. So basically, people can have a permit and be within one hundred feet of the residence, but it doesn't give them any extra protection or comfortable feeling here, you know? It's kind of if somebody parks in front of your house, you know what it takes to move them? They're going to tag them, they're going to paint the road, the people are going to move back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and either through intimidation or when they feel like it, that's the only way they're going to move if they don't want to. So I believe that basically the permit process should be brought back so we can, so we can review it with possible action, and, you know, probably make a change somewhere where if you have a permit and you paid fifty-four dollars for two-year permit, make sure someone's tagged to say, hey, you don't have a permit. You're going to be towed, not the seventy-two hour rule that allows you just to move. The moving more of a distance would be good for other vehicles, but for the permit process for RVs, I think we need to review that. I think it would help the CSOs and the police department also. So that, that was my enforcement, if you're okay with that.
Yes.
Is this still my turn?
Councilmember Bridge, you okay with adding that on to your motion?
Yeah, I think that was already kind of...
Okay. So just make sure there's clarification. Are you guys, the seconds and thirds, good for that?
And the reason I...
Councilmember Ball, yes. Councilmember Starbuck, yes, so. Okay, there's some direction, more direction.
Thank you. And still my turn right now?
Yeah, you're fired.
And the reason I said that is because when you bring something back, you want to make sure that you have an item that can actually have an action item tied to it. Otherwise, we're just here discussing it, and nothing's going to get changed, okay? I, I do need support on a couple of other issues. I'd like to bring back some sort of a utility presentation or policy regarding changing designations for multi-units, multifamily units. We have a lot of people that are in distress over some of the ways, solid waste is being charged, but also for utilities. We have a homeless population here, we have people there that are invading our public safety space, and there's times where there's owners that are revamping or remodeling their units, and they have to pay for all the utilities at once if they have their units vacant for more than a certain amount of time at all. So basically, what's happening is their cameras are of non-use if they're vacant and they're being remodeled. They'll stay up for a timeframe of, we could put whatever, not forever, but we think that we should, they should be able to at least put their electricity on. And there may be a way of re-designated these, these properties, because commercial and residential seem to have different leeways. So I'd like to see if I can get some support, at least to bring that back from staff with possible action, so we can see if we can help some of these landowners. And also for the solid waste also, two separate items, because it does affect the people with the most properties here. And then the other issue would be to make, possibly see if we can also, instead of forcing the owner to be responsible, allow them to keep the tenant responsible also for some of these increases. Somehow, we designated just the owners to be responsible, but the owners feel handcuffed that they can hold their tenants responsible who are under a lease agreement, who should be responsible for these increases. So.
That's how, I believe you got three things. One is utility billing process, which Councilmember Vega did make the motion on January twenty-first of this year. So if we bring that back, I think that brings your solid waste aspect along with that. I think that one's already there on the one, so that is your trash. I think the second thing that you had was the, in, in commercial components that aren't residential, you're allowed to just turn on electric. You're, you're able to pick and choose while you're working on a facility, but that wasn't presented to other commercial aspects that were residential related. So you couldn't just turn one unit on. You weren't allowed to do that. You had to turn all the utilities on. So I think that was your, one of your other motions?
Yeah, and I think...
So I'd, I'd support that one.
Thank you for cleaning that up a little bit.
Okay. Councilmember Bridge would support that one as well, so we have that discussion. And the other was the ability, which would be again on the utility billing, but just to specify on that, that was the ability to decide whether, what's happening is solid waste is being now redirected back to landlords from tenants. And I think there's a small phrase about a year and a half ago in a motion that was made, or an ordinance that was made. So I think that's your third discussion you want, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'd give you a second on that one, to bring that for discussion with possible action as well.
So we're just going to update the January twenty...
We could do it all at once, I think, yeah.
Okay.
And do you have a third on that? Councilmember Bridge is giving you, we have a third on that, but for Councilmember Vega?
Do we get a third from everybody?
You got that?
I might be hard to...
I think I got all three of them.
I want to make sure I heard that, okay?
Okay.
We were doing voiceless. Thank you so much for cleaning that up. I have one more thing, if I could, unless you're done.
You're going to sing?
No, no. But I think, it's your birthday, happy birthday, Steve. And I think it's probably prudent, you know, to give, to ask the police chief, possibly next meeting or whenever he can, give us an update on the homeless and the helpless, and everybody that's here, once in a while. We have a new influx of people all the time. I know your challenges are ever never-ending, but it's a visual out there, and I'm not sure what your challenges are, you know, to see what we have to do and to keep this place clean. I think they've been pretty proactive, but every once in a while, you see new ones coming in here, and we're wondering what's happening here, you know? Because it is a visual, and we're having more people in the corners and a couple of things that are happening, especially in the last couple of weeks. So I'm not sure if it's just the people that are coming in or non-compliant, but I'm sure your challenges are big. So if we could get an update on, on that, once, at least once a month, that'd be great. That was a request to bring the chief back to the...
Do you have a second and a third for that one? The chief just give us an updated report?
He's going to give it to us. I got you.
Yeah, once, once a month's pretty tight. How about once a quarter?
How about once a year, maybe? Are you okay with that?
You do once a quarter?
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, okay? No, I want it sooner than that.
The chief says he can make once a quarter.
Thank you, okay.
I'm sorry, an update on what?
But you know, but once a quarter doesn't tell us what's going to happen, what's happening now. I'm concerned what's happening right now, unless you guys are not as concerned as I am with what you're seeing down on the streets.
If you want, I can make it part of my city manager report and do a small update on what we're initiatives we're doing right now. I know the point in time numbers came in, and I wasn't too happy with what the county reported. We saw a pretty good reduction in homeless throughout the city. We saw a lot more being put in the bridge house and in the shelters, but we saw a number that I don't understand on vehicle homelessness. So I can do an update on what we're doing, on some of the tasks we're doing, just like I did before, the...
That would be great. I appreciate that.
The phases we're doing, the riverbed, we did the one, two, three, and four. I just looked at the drone footage this morning. We have two small encampments, so pretty much the riverbed is, is pretty clean right now, but we're going to go out of those last two encampments. So if you want, I can just make it part of my city manager report and things that we're doing, initiatives we're taking.
That would be great. We have a guy that's playing golf in the median by Panda Express, right in the center, and with a, with a sign there, and there's no golf there. There's no golf in the median right there on the corner of H and Central, okay? I think it just makes our city look shabby.
So you're telling me there's fifty-one-fifties out there?
I got you. This guy was actually looking for the ball, and there was no ball.
Yeah, there's some challenges out there. Thank you, sir.
We good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
I'll try to be real quick, just piggybacking on the discussion on RVs. Definitely, I think that's important. Maybe reverse engineer a little bit from the police chief, police department. Ultimately, if they can't enforce something, or they're enforcing something currently, but they, they know they're spinning their wheels and they're not going anywhere, then maybe we can get some guidance from them on what would actually be effective to just include them. I, I think the only council request I have, and again, this is a big one, and this, I don't know how it should land, but the state yesterday got rid of SEQA. That's not nothing, that's a big deal, and that's, our city attorney is going to be, everything is SEQA. So I'd be curious at some top level, you know, what are the general impacts of SEQA not being prioritized, let's say, in a lot of the processes at the city level? So again, I don't know what I'm asking for, other than like, it would be nice to be edified in the next few months on what that means for long poke. What does it mean for building, planning, you know, projecting, visualizing the future of our city? That's something that I would love to, to put a request out on. A couple of quick comments. Flower Festival had a blast.
Did you want me to get a second on your own secret?
Sure, if you want to do that.
I'd give you a second on SEQA, so maybe one up?
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Councilmember Bridge, give you a third on that, to bring back some discussion on what's going on with SEQA.
So that's a...
Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Flower Festival was great. First time my little guy kind of went and got to ride lots of the rides. Very impressed with the security, the whole deal. It was a great, great event. We had a good time. Wife wanted me to let you know she's disappointed there's not some sort of July Fourth event, but I tried to explain it to her. So hopefully, there's lots of fun block parties. And last but not least, Steve, is it your birthday? It is your birthday. It's also my son Thea's birthday today, so he turns three, so just wanted to say happy birthday. Happy birthday. I will never forget your birthday. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Wow. Your birthday back when rocks were soft. Yep, it was a good Flower Festival. I have no reports. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. Thanks to everybody, and the city manager helped me stick flowers on a float. We learned a lot. And Councilmember Starbuck, he got sticky fingers, too. We had fun, but it was a lot of good times, and thanks to everybody out there helping with that. And yeah, we, we did pull it off. We, we beat the prison for you. Okay, so one thing I'd like to add on the update of the electric rates, that's supposed to come forward on September as a presentation. I think that there could, I'll just continue at that time as a presentation, but I think it'd be important to bring back this UFS report that was in here on the rate increases as part of the presentation you're expressing with us, and namely, one of the parts that I have in there, which I asked several times, about capital improvement plans with electric. In this report here on page twenty-one, you had seventy-one million dollars worth of projects that were supposed to be there, that were part of the reason for raising the rates, a very large reason. And you remember, I asked several times during the meeting, budget meetings, where are these studies? Where, where are the projects? And I think we represented twenty-eight, forty-three million dollars in this timeframe. But anyhow, bring it back to identify as well on this, because there could be some other avenues or areas that were reported that we were going to do, and it was reason for raising the rates, and it doesn't appear that we're doing these projects. If we are, let me know. I mean, I've asked, I met with the utility director and electrical and everything else, see what's going on. So the electric, it's another point of concern I had yesterday, and we did sign off on the budget aspect. Would I give you guys six minutes to spare? Then we finished off signing off on that. But I did have, I did have some concerns that I just wanted to express publicly there. And this was the summary of full-time position documents. You know, you guys had me drinking through a fire hose. I drank more than two thousand pages, hard pages that I went through and I read, and probably another thousand pages I read off of the computer. And that was in six, seven weeks, eight weeks. And granted, you guys were busy putting those things together. And one of the complications I had is, we would get a new doc... And one of the complications I had is, we would get a new document, but it wasn't redlined, so it did make it very complicated to go and read a lot of that, and I'm sure I missed some things, I did catch some things. But one of the things that I was concerned and did ask for to be, made sure that everything was brought back, was a document that was the summary of full-time position adjustments that we got in May at one time, and in that time, we only identified one, the second year fiscal numbers in there of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, we brought another one back that didn't have any numbers on it in June, and then I go on the website and find out that there actually became two columns, became a first year and a second year, which I never did identify a first year and a second year. And what is the financial difference? That's approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I didn't know that we were approving, that we approved. And then, when I find out it came back on the website, you actually pulled out the equity adjustments out of there, and came up with a four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but somewhere, the equity payments, I don't know if they got approved or not approved, but as a point of fact, I did ask for these, everything on this document to have to come back to council before it's finalized. So, yet, you could give me a quick answer to that?
We're scheduled to bring that back, and hopefully, we'll make it a little bit easier to follow, and we're hoping for the second meeting in August, and we'll bring everything that's on that sheet back for justification.
Which, which sheet?
Just throw them both away, we'll give you.
All of them, I hope, right? Okay.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we passed the budget.
Yes, we did.
We didn't authorize changes, any positions, and that will be coming back to council for you guys to authorize that.
Just, just wanted to point that out, that it was.
Is the latest budget now that got approved on the website?
Yes, it, yes, it is.
Okay.
It's important that we make the June thirtieth deadline for our GFOWA award.
All right. Then, one last thing on a good note, APCD, the city of Long Poak, did get some funding, the school district threw a fine of one of the properties in town that was pialating. The Boys and Girls Club are getting a fifty thousand dollar grant to put in two new heat pump systems at the Boys and Girls Club, and the Dick DeWes is getting forty thousand dollars worth of filtration system, and the school district's getting estimated two hundred thousand dollars with a, a couple of schools anyways, of new furniture for the youth, and the YMCA is getting a twenty thousand dollars worth of filtration system, so there were some good things that came back to the community, and they'll be doing a fifteen thousand dollar community outreach, fifteen thousand. Yeah, I'll submit this paper to staff as well as that. I did attend the APCD and the SBAG meeting, and with that, happy birthday, Councilmember Bridge, and we'll adjourn till, see nobody's lights on, the July fifteenth meeting at six thirty PM.